All right, we'll go ahead and call the December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, meeting of the Planning Commission to order at six P M. I want to welcome everybody. Want to go ahead and start with roll call if we could, to my left, please?
Deb Cameron.
Elizabeth Shin.
Scott Brown.
And I'm Thomas O'Brien. Want to welcome everybody tonight. First order of business is approval of our November eighth minutes. Again, just to kind of go through how we hope to do this, even if you did not attend the meeting, we are going to be looking for a vote, yea or nay on these. So can we go ahead and get a motion on those, please?
I move to approve the November eighth minutes.
All right, Commissioner Shin moved to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, Commissioner Cameron seconded. We got a motion and a second. Is there any debate about the approval of said minutes? All right, all in favor of approving the minutes, raise your hand, please. All opposed, like sign. That carries unanimously. Thank you, everybody. Do we have any organizational or procedural items? And no unfinished business, I assume. Well, then we will get to the reason that brings us all here tonight, new business. Tonight, we're going to be talking about review and consideration of text amendments to the code of the city of Dunwoody for chapter twenty, signs, articles two through seven. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. So I'm gonna be giving an overview of the current sign ordinance and give some background on it. So I want to start off by just noting that signs are really, really complex. There's a ton of free speech issues with them. So everything that you're seeing tonight has been really extensively reviewed by legal counsel. And the current code was also reviewed extensively by legal counsel before we adopted it. So we adopted a new code in October of two thousand and twenty-one, and that was after a year-long review. And that included review by staff, review by a steering committee of stakeholders in the area, legal experts, planning commission and city council. We had one four-hour-long meeting last year for that. And then significant public comment and discussion at all of those meetings. And the intent was always to have an update after a year. And so staff is now proposing an update based on a year-long tracking of outcomes and impacts in order to simplify the code, fix issues that we're seeing, and increase its usability. And again, these proposed changes have been reviewed both by the city attorney and by an outside law sign specialist. So the sign code is organized by districts, so residential districts, office districts, commercial and industrial districts, the perimeter center overlay district, and then quasi-public institutional district, and that includes things like churches and schools. So depending on which district you're in, you can, you have access to different types of signage. And then it's also, in addition, a menu board approach. So each property can pick several sign types from a range of choices. And that's both permanent signs and limited-duration signage. And then each sign type has specific requirements for size, lighting, location, and materials. So we're proposing a total of twenty-eight changes. So I have them all listed here. So the first slide is changes one through thirteen, and then fourteen through twenty-seven. And then we feel that most of these changes are just sort of smoothing out rough edges with the codes, but then there's a few that we'd like to highlight. So the first one is combining two districts, and that's change number nine. And you should be able to reference that on the staff memo in front of you as well. So functionally, the standards for office districts and commercial and industrial districts are basically identical. And as you may have seen through looking through the code, we have a really long sign code. And so we feel that combining the districts will simplify and clarify the code. And again, there are almost no differences between the sign standards, so that we foresee no major issues in terms of combining those. It's just simplifying it. Our major policy change is expanding upon the master sign plan process. So we're seeing a real need for flexibility in order to accommodate larger projects like the State Farm complex and High Street. And we see a need to allow certain specific requests for deviation from the code to allow for creativity and unusual circumstances. We have an existing master sign plan section, so we want to expand upon that and clarify guidance for developers. We think it could be written a bit more clear than it is now to sort of provide clearer pathways forward. And then we want to standardize the process with our other administrative and zoning procedures. So using the same public notice timeline, the same organizational procedures, et cetera. So the master sign plan process would be split into two avenues. And the first avenue is sort of simpler, smaller changes, no like total change in sign area. And that process would go through the community development department, and it would be reviewed by the community development director within thirty days. And so that would be if you wanted to expand the maximum area and/or height for individual signs, but not in total. Change the location of signs, change the design, or use different materials. And that would follow our administrative procedures generally, hence the thirty-day turnaround. For much bigger, more substantial changes, we would route people through a process that would be similar to rezonings, where it would go through Planning Commission, receive a recommendation, and move on to mayor and city council. And that would be exceeding the maximum number of sign types, exceeding the maximum count for each sign type, exceeding the maximum total sign area allowed, and sort of with combination of any of the four changes for the administrative process. So I want to review a few examples of why we think this change is really important and the issues that we're running into. So this is a picture of signage that State Farm wanted to put up. This is the side of the building that's facing Hammond. And the State Farm building is a little unusual because it has so many sides. It's, it's not, you know, a four-sided building. It's, it's more geometric than that. And then it has sort of stepped buildings. So it has like the really tall portion and then portions that are a little bit shorter. And so we weren't able to approve this sign because the building is allowed to have two signs that are at the very top, parapet signs in the top twenty-five percent. So they have those, but then all other signs can't be more than twenty-four feet above ground. And so this sign was proposed to be around a hundred feet above ground. So we feel that there's a need to allow for more flexibility because they want to have a sign that's at a height that can be seen from the road, but the current code wouldn't allow for that. And then as the High Street project sort of moves through our permitting process, we're anticipating challenges for them because so much of their campus is interior. So if you look on the plan at building ten and then these two orange buildings that are across from building ten, technically, those don't have any street frontage because they face this driveway. And so that would limit them to one wall sign each. But that would mean that they wouldn't be able to have, say, any signage facing the park and facing the driveway. It just wouldn't allow for any flexibility for these campuses that are really mostly interior-facing and not facing exterior street frontages. And so most of the other changes are just standardizing and clarifying sections throughout the code, correcting oversights by adding in some more information and definitions. And there's a few other minor policy changes, such as allowing businesses to pick between a combination of ground-mounted signs and building signs or just building-mounted signs. The reason for that is that is we want to encourage buildings to be closer to the street. We don't want to punish buildings for not choosing a monument sign. We want to allow them to have more flexibility with building-mounted signs if it doesn't make sense for them to have a monument sign. We're increasing the maximum sign height slightly to bring it into conformity with what our current maximum ground floor height is for buildings in the perimeter center overlay and removing the minimum sign height because we realized that it was restricting certain areas like the buildings in Dunwoody Village that have the faux Mansard roofs, that the minimum sign height was preventing them from doing any signage because they can't put it on the faux Mansard roof because it would be a roof sign. And so they need to put it underneath that. And the minimum sign height was just preventing them from utilizing that space. We're also proposing to allow non-conforming wall signs to be replaced as long as the replacement wall sign doesn't exceed the existing sign area and remains conforming in terms of illumination and materials. We're proposing to reduce the sign count for wayfinding signs, but ease location restrictions in the process. We're expanding window sign regulations and mandating permits for them so that we can more easily regulate them. And then allowing monument signs to be internal to certain properties and restricting the amount a property can have to a system based on acreage that we think will be more equitable for larger developments. So I want to give an example of why we feel that the wayfinding signage regulations are important. So we picked these two sites, Dumbarton Baptist Church on the right and Marcus Jewish Community Center on the left, as examples of how challenging it is for large campuses if they have wayfinding signage only restricted to curb cuts. As you can see, Dumbarton Baptist Church has three curb cuts and Marcus Jewish Community Center only has two. And so any properties in the area, and we have campuses that are outside of quasi-public institutional uses that would want to put wayfinding signage internal to the property. And so the curb cut restriction doesn't make a whole lot of sense for them. So that's sort of the general overview of the changes we're proposing, and I'm available for any questions.
All right, thank you very much. And because we are hearing this as a public hearing, I want to give any opportunity for proponents to speak to us. They would have ten minutes. Seeing none, we will then offer ten for folks opposed to this. Okay, so then at this point, I'd like to open up the floor, and we want to start with my right. Open up the floor to any questions that we might have as we try and parse through this. And I want to kind of share with the commission where my head is, but we can certainly, this is absolutely up for debate. I would love to be able to pass this with a minimal number of motions, just for clarity's sake. But if we do need to parse it out because there's a conflict or something we want to change, we're absolutely open to that. But kind of the more, the better we can lump in if that's possible. So Commissioner Brown, if you'd like to start questions, please feel free to do so.
Okay, I don't have a whole lot of questions. I do, I do have one. I, I will just say, I think everything makes a lot of sense. It seems like this is really well-vetted. And I appreciate that you guys are looking to add more flexibility and clarity to the sign code, particularly since you've had some, some feedback and some lessons learned. So I, I certainly think this is a good, a good thing coming forward. Everything to me seemed to make sense. I didn't really see any red flags. There was one, one thing that I noted here. On section twenty-eight-six, this is where we had the combination of the different office and industrial and commercial districts into a combined district for the sake of the sign ordinance. It got to a section where we were talking about temporary signage, including sandwich, sandwich boards. And I think this may have been just a little oversight, but the sandwich boards are allowed in kind of the, the less intense districts, but not allowed in the higher intensity districts. Say they're allowed in C one, but not in C two. I forget the other specific districts. But I guess just wanted to ask staff about that and see if that's something that possibly might be changed.
Yeah, so I think you're absolutely correct that that was just an oversight that came with combining the districts. So I think that's just a matter of combining the table to reflect that. Thanks for bringing that up.
And I, I don't know if that's, you know, as we move towards a motion later, if that's something that we, you know, procedurally, I don't know how we tackle that in terms of maybe requesting that that be changed in addition to everything else that's proposed.
I don't think it would be a terrible thing to wrap into the motion. Just wrap the idea. And, and again, what we're attempting to do is execute on the ideas here on this memo. So that should get us where we need to go, but I don't think it's a terrible idea to have it there on the record. So that, good point. Thank you.
Okay, yep, that's, that's all for me.
Commissioner Shin.
I had two questions. First question was about the vision clearance triangle. And if there's anything from like the public works or com dev standpoint about fixed objects in the right of way? If there's been any issues with like people crashing into any signs based on the, the five-foot or fifteen-foot rule that's outlined in the sign code?
No, we have not received anything sort of as part of this. It's not been an issue kind of over the last year. Either we have a few sort of existing monument signs that are sort of in the right of way, which is sort of that, that is a problem. But what we proposed, we haven't had any issues so far.
Okay, and I guess that was also why they're proposed to be in the private right of way is maintenance as well? Yeah, okay. And then my second question or point was also on the sandwich board signs in section twenty-eight-six. With them being on sidewalks typically or pathways, is there a way we can add it to be ADA compliant? To have the clear width, the minimum of four feet per the pro-wag or?
Yeah, that's conceptually, we've always tried to impose that already, but that could be a good thing to just like add a sentence somewhere in there, and we can take a look at where that makes the most sense.
I think it was also in section twenty-eight-nine. It mentioned the sandwich boards as well.
Yeah, we'll, we'll take a quick look and see if we can find a sort of logical place for that.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
Commissioner, Commissioner Cameron.
My only question was on the review process. So is it correct that the administrative master's time plan is only reviewed within the, the community development department? And, and then the ma, the master sign plan is more of a process that comes before the planning commission and then goes to city council?
Correct, absolutely. That's the two, that's the main difference between the two.
And is there any? I guess the, I guess it's just basically a size limitation for, and the, the four, the four qualifiers or the four changes allowed for the administrative, okay? Strike that. And then the appeal process, is it the appeal process from the decisions of the community development director? Do they, what's, what's that process? Can you just go through that real quick?
Yeah, so I can look at the specifics for that. We modeled it off of our current appeal process for any decisions based on the or from the community development director. So it's appealed and let me pull up that specific section so I can reference it. So it would be appealed in accordance with section twenty dash one thirty-seven, which is the last section of the chapter, sorry, excuse me, second to last. And it's made by filing an appeal request to the zoning board of appeals for decisions by the community development director. And it would need to be filed within thirty days of the decision.
And then just a fact question, I guess. What is EMC?
Yeah, so that's electronic messaging center. So that's the signs that sort of like change or light up based on like a pre-programmed computer thing. So you'll see them at gas stations sometimes, outside of churches, the ones that sort of like change on, based on a pre-programmed timer, basically.
Okay, great. Those are my only questions. Thanks.
Thank you, everybody. Allegra, a couple, oh.
I, I've looked this up, Commissioner Shin. We have sort of under section twenty dash fourteen prohibited signs, we have sort of a, because I, I remember that we have, that we had some kind of blanket statement somewhere in the code. And we have sort of under twenty dash fourteen prohibited signs, you have Q, any sign that is a hazard to traffic or pedestrians, which we sort of interpret as is as preventing sort of ADA access. That, that, that was sort of our sort of catch-all that, that we have in the code that we apply to, to these sandwich board signs.
Uh, sorry, Paul, where was that located?
That's in twenty dash fourteen prohibited signs, and that is item number Q.
Okay, my red line, I have twenty-fourteen as reserved, but twenty dash thirty-four, I do see prohibited signs. But just, I'm throwing it out there for what I see as being the record, and that's totally fine. But I'm, I'm hearing Commissioner Cameron agree with that assessment. I believe that's twenty dash thirty-four. I don't want to be persnickety, but I think you said both, okay. Okay. I want to go ahead and ask just a couple, couple of things. Allegra, would you, would you mind just confirming for me? You have been in, in the year or so since we have enacted the new sign code. You're the primary point of contact for sign-related issues, is that right?
Correct. I'm the sign planner for the department.
So these tweaks, just to be clear, these tweaks are born of your experience and are designed to make the process smoother, more equitable, more consistent, ultimately, you know, make it better based on what you see as big problems, is that?
Yeah, that's correct. For the last year, I've been keeping a list of any issues I encountered or, you know, any points of confusion as I walked through people through the process, as I did the sign reviews. And I've been through, I, you know, have a list of every sign that I've ever approved. And so I went through all of those to find any issues and keep track of them as part of updating the code.
Now, let me ask you. With regard to the, let's talk about the state forum issue since you pointed that out in particularity. Is that the sort of issue that, that would be dealt with under the twenty dash one-three-three, the major? So state forum might have gotten their sign under the way this is structured, had it gone through planning commission and city council. That would have, that would have been considered a major deviation, would have been considered through that channel. Is that correct?
So I think that one could have been considered administratively because that's just about the location of the sign, that it's sort of too high for the signage regulations. But I think, you know, we would have this applied to, to existing all-new common developments. So think High Street, everything else, and then existing common developments that are over seven acres. So think perimeter marketplace, Ashford Lane, State Farm. So our hope would be that with the new common developments, we would catch them coming in and sort of have them do one big master sign plan at the beginning, and then with other ones, we would have them update as they go. So we, yeah, the hope would be that this issue could have been fixed if we had had a master sign plan process to allow for a little bit of flexibility, again, based on somewhat unusual circumstances, i.e. the shape of their building.
And so, okay, then taking your second example, the High Street, for those buildings that were unfortunate enough to not have, you know, curb, curb space, that would be a kind of an example of a major, that would go through the major portion of that, that kind of bifurcated process, too, is that correct?
Correct. We would have them submit that sort of as they came in for, for plan review.
Okay, thank you. All right, I, I'm, I'm interested to hear what folks have to say. What, what I have heard is, you know, kind of two issues. One, the, the correction of that table to kind of combine it, and that was Commissioner Brown that raised that. That, that's more of a, more of a typo, but making sure we address that in our review. The second issue that I heard was from Commissioner Shin regarding making sure that we have, that we set things forth in an ADA compliant manner. Or at least approach the rewrites with that. Again, not knowing what our legal counsel is going to say, I think that's an advisable thing to do under any condition is adhere to federal law. So with that said, those are kind of the two big issues. I think any motion that we make could contemplate those issues if we believe that we want to include those in there. But at this point, I think it probably makes sense to form a motion, and then we can, we can debate that motion if there's a second for it.
Can I just ask a quick clarifying question?
Sure.
If, if our motion includes a couple revisions, what then is the process for staff? Do they have to come back to us again? Or is that, are we just making the motion for them to address those two issues and it's approved otherwise?
Yeah, what we are, what we're aspirationally doing is leaving staff with a blueprint of what we believe to be important. And, and essentially what I'm hearing is about ninety-eight percent of this is exactly as it should be. So the, the idea is not to pull staff back in front of us, but rather say, here are a couple of things that we care about.
Right.
Can you please mind those as you approach council with this for approval? Everybody on that page?
Yes, that's what I was hoping.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, well, with all that said, and, and again, we're not going to take any debate out of the process because we will have time to debate a motion. I would like to see if we can entertain a motion here. Does somebody want to go ahead and form that?
I'll do a motion. I move that we approve the sign code update as explained in detail by staff with the two changes that we discussed, the one for ensuring ADA compliance and the other for the sign board or sandwich board, fixing the typo in section twenty-eight-six.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna repeat that back to you just to make sure I'm gonna correctly, correctly state it, and then we'll seek a second. I heard Commissioner Cameron move that we approve the, the sign code update pursuant to the changes set forth in staff's memorandum with an additional two qualifications, one of which is ensuring that we, well, ask you that we consider adding ADA compliance in, in particular to twenty-eight-six, and I believe twenty-eight-eight and nine. And then secondarily, addressing the sandwich board issue that was pointed out by Commissioner Brown in section twenty-eight-six. Did I correctly restate that to your satisfaction?
That is correct.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that motion.
All right, Commissioner Brown seconds. At this point, I'd like to take a step back, and if we have some debate or, or discussion, I would invite any commissioner that chooses to do so to have at it. Okay, well, I, we've got a motion and a second, and hearing no debate, I believe it's appropriate to take a vote at this point. All in favor of approving the motion that's been seconded, please raise your hand. Any opposed, like sign. The motion carries four to nothing. Thank you, everybody. At this point, we'll move on and consider any other business that there is, okay? Any public comment at this time? I don't see a whole lot of additional public here. We are not online. I know I've asked that. We're not online at this point. Is that correct? Okay. Then at this point, I will invite a commission comment at this point. I'm gonna start to my left with Commissioner Cameron.
I just want to thank you guys. This is a great presentation. It's very clear. It's easy to follow. And I, as I said to Allegra when we did our pre-meeting, I appreciate as a citizen that you all have worked so hard to make this workable and to develop a little bit of extra flexibility for the city. And I did a pre-meeting with Allegra, and I thought it was great, and I appreciated that, too. So thanks for your time.
Commissioner Shin.
Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate, thank you guys for all your hard work on this the past year, and hopefully all goes well.
Yep, I'll just echo those same sentiments. I know sign codes can be very tedious. So thanks for taking something that's so tedious and explaining it so well. And also, you know, listening and responding to the community and making these changes. Thank you.
And again, I'm going to echo that as well. I want to thank everybody for making the time to have, you know, kind of mini sessions that are statutorily appropriate, but that also help educate us before we sit down here. You know, getting an education for the first time up here can, can belabor things that don't necessarily need to be. So thank you for that. Again, I think this is well-written, and hopefully council sees it that way as well. So appreciate your time, everybody. Is there anything further we need to discuss? Hearing nothing further, we stand adjourned. Thank you, everyone. What is the most fun part of being on planning commission?